Good evening, I will call our Monday, PM, third meeting to the orders. Rule call, Joel?
Here.
Leah?
Here.
Adam?
Here.
Sarah?
Here.
Carly?
Here.
Tom?
Here.
I'm here. Have we been pretty... Please join me in the present.
United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, our God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Summowhore Area School District in partnership with the community is dedicated to nurturing, educating, and challenging all students, preparing and empowering them to productive, responsible, and self-sufficient members of society. Would someone like to make a motion to approve our agenda? A motion by Leah, seconded by Sarah. All those in favor of our agenda, please say aye. None opposed? Anyone opposed? Approve Lord Glover May 20th, 2024 Board Regular and Executive Meeting minutes. Motion by Carly, seconded by Tom, to approve our May 20th, 2024 Board Regular and Executive Meeting minutes. All those in favor, please say aye. None opposed? Number three, addressing the board, building good news and May student spotlight. Starting off the stage.
We go first, great. Alright, Emma, come on in. Okay, everybody, this is Emma Pearson. Emma is an eighth grader, and we're monthly because we were supposed to be here in May, but we had to reschedule track meet, and Emma is a tractor. So, thank you for moving us to tonight. We'll double up at high school. Yeah, okay, a couple things about her. First of all, I will tell you when I asked our building leadership team, a number of months ago, they had any recommendations for our middle school student spotlight, Emma's name came up right away, and it was followed by, "Emma's awesome, oh yes, I was thinking Emma too. Emma would be a perfect one." And this was from people from all different grade levels, all different content areas, all of those things. And I can tell you, in the time since that meeting, and now, I can't think of a time in the years that I've been here where I've had more positive comments about anyone who we were bringing to you in any of the times that we've done that. She is absolutely the spotlight at the middle school. And, just a couple of some things, I reached out to some teachers, not just eighth grade teachers from this year, but past teachers, just to share a couple of things about her, and I'd like to share some of those with you. So, I've had the opportunity, these are some quotes, "I've had the opportunity to work with Emma in a variety of ways, musical, forensics, volleyball, and as a student. Emma's the kind of girl that can work with anyone and is willing to stand up for others. She is definitely someone who brightens my day every time I see her. Emma is such a positive influence in our middle school. She happily works with class, with any classmate, and works to draw them into the group. Emma is a wonderful person. She is an active participant in student council and always has great ideas to help better and tighter student body. Emma has been such a light in the music room. She is always looking to take on challenges and does so with an open mind and outstanding musical curiosity. She is encouraging to others, hardworking to the backs, and the kindest leader those around her. She is a wonderful human. She is kind, compassionate, and thoughtful. She is truly a bright spot in my day. Emma is absolutely the definition of a great light in my day. Emma, you make us so much better here. We are sad to see you go over to high school. Cody, Talisa, Hallie, and you guys are getting a great one. So, Emma, thank you. You were fantastic.
Emma, can you introduce your family to us?
That's my dad, Ryan, my sister Chloe, and my mom Theresa.
We know it's all part of family that helps to create just this wonderful family, beautiful family. Emma, thank you so much for your leadership. On behalf of the Board of Education, would like to extend this certificate of appreciation to you. If you wouldn't mind holding on for a minute, we're going to introduce another student for the June student spotlight, but then we'd like to be able to go outside and take some pictures. Would that be okay? Wonderful. Welcome and thank you. Let's give another round of applause.
So, we also now have an opportunity to recognize the middle school or a group of people in the middle, in the building when we do this. And I will say, if you ever walk into the middle school, you know exactly why I'd like to recognize Kim Tucker and Chris Farrell. They are unbelievably welcoming. They do a million things at one time, and they do it all with grace. They are always putting the new for our kids first. And I just can't express enough my sincere appreciation for all of the things they do. They absolutely make our building better. And if nothing else, from my office, the sheer number of times that I hear them say, "How can I help you?" Or, "What can I do for you?" Or, "Come here, kid, and let me help you with that." Like, I can't quantify that, but I can tell you, it's just a constant thing that is coming up from behind their desks. And I will tell you that they have both held successfully other roles in the building. They've been paraeducators and some other things, but they have definitely found their sweet spot in terms of being the face of our middle school. They are the absolute reason that our building is so warm and so welcoming and so efficient as it is. So, Kim and Chris, shout out to you two. You just make us so much better. It's fantastic.
It starts at the top. You may know that in addition to serving as principal of the middle school, Paul has done an exemplary job, doing an exemplary job as the president of our new order, this entire year. A lot has occurred under his leadership, and when you say you've made things better, truly, you've made this community better. So, Paul, thank you for your leadership as well, my friend.
Paul, it's just a follow-up, Emma. Twice had a follow-up. Alexa, come on down. Well, we get to have Alexa, Alexa here, who's a junior. And if you don't know Alexa, well, you should. She's an amazing junior, and when we met, did anything together, talked about student spotlight, very similar to what Paul talked about, it was like instantly. And part of it was, we've had a lot, we've had a big initiative, and HOSA has been something that, even when the absent-minded principal maybe doesn't quite respond to the email right away, she's like, "Hey, we're doing this job here, we're doing this job here." And HOSA is a health, what does HOSA stand for? It's...
Health Occupation Students of America.
Yes, it is a growing group of students to really focus on healthcare. And Alexa has been the linchpin, she's been the point person to get this organization started, which for us is huge in Dane County, we know how important it is for health here, and Alexa's leadership has brought us that at the high school. She's also in DECA, student council, golf, we're just talking golf for the summer, she goes, "Golfing and working." I was like, "That sounds like a beautiful summer." We have, let's see here, I feel like I need a piece of paper to see all the things. She's a choir musical, link crew, National Honor Society, she takes AP classes, imagine working and doing all these things, and also being like one of the top of the class as well academically. So, not only is she leading in the classroom, leading organizations, she's leading across the building and across the community. And we are better because of you, you make us better. We love having you in the classroom, we love having you in our building. And like Paul, I had a chat with a few teachers, and I want to read a few things that teachers had to say. One teacher said, "She's the student you wish you had 28 of in each class. This class is designed for live independent workouts, and she's one of the hardest workers in the classes. She's organized, as she demonstrates with her workout, her journals. She's also communicated way ahead of time, anything that she needs done. She's a wonderful person, caring, compassionate, focused on making her school community a better place. Alexa has a vision to establish a hosted chapter in our school, and through her hard work, we've been a very successful first year." And lastly, Ms. Brinecke had said from student council, "I can always count on her to help me in the knee taps. Alexa's always kind, powerful, not only to me, but her other members of the council as well. Her positivity helps raise everyone's spirits. She's become someone I know will follow through with her commitments, and she does everything with full effort and attention to detail. She's amazing, she's a great asset to student council and to high school." And I couldn't agree more. We are so happy to have you with us and making our high school better, making our students better, and even making our staff better. So, thank you for all the work for us, Alexa.
In behalf of our Board of Education and your high school administrative team, we want to present you with this certificate of appreciation. We're so grateful to you and your leadership. You represent the very best of what Summowhore High School is all about, so congratulations.
I have my parents Nicole and Craig with me tonight.
Thank you for sharing her with us. I appreciate it.
I also want to share a story. Alexa was in California, right? And she competing at DECA Nationals. And while she was there, she was constantly thinking about the high school and emailing about eight therapy dogs before AP testing. So, she just is constantly thinking of others, and like even doing some collaboration with some other organizations in Dane County, it's huge, and again, you're amazing.
Thank you so much. I take you very far. That's for sure. Can we take some pictures?
Yeah, sure.
What do you say, could we take a break? But I would love it if our middle school is on Good Evening Mrs. Fisher, and our high school is on Mr. Craven, could we maybe just go outside that door? We'll take a break, and we'll be right back.
You need a picture with me.
Well, thank you for the high school spawn kind of good news. The group we really thought about was our whole student services department. And yes, over the last month, our student services department has been instrumental in making sure that not only our building is, has what they need, but also many other buildings. But I even think back to our student services team, even to like Sarah C. and Jenny Bries and Jen Momador, coordinating our activism program, who helped to try to make sure some of the students that need the most support are getting it, and they're really struggling. And I've done so, we're tired of saying, a lot of the end of the year, teachers, life's going to be a little bit easier until you're in May. And actually, for these, for those three, it gets harder. For student services, it gets harder in May. Because here you are trying to make sure that every kid has what they need, whether they're going to the summer. Sometimes the summer isn't the greatest for some people, and you're getting to the end of the year, and the end of the year, difficult to graduate. And our student services team just does such amazing work. And we are so proud to have them, they make our building better. It's always a great place to go in, kids can get the support they need, they get the resources they need, and I just think, we have one of the, I've worked in a few different student services departments, and I absolutely love this group, and I feel so lucky and blessed to be able to work with this group. And I just wanted to share and brag on them a little bit, because I think we don't, you know, the teachers are fantastic, but that student services team is really the core of what keeps our mental health and our building going forward and stronger. So, they do great work. So, you see our counselors and school psych, and social worker, and at-risk, and so, all those, please make sure you thank them, because they are, they're tremendous, and we just, we love them to death. So, thank you. If you don't mind me just bragging on the high school administrative team as well, I admire many things about what you folks do. Chief among them is the fact that you build such positive relationships for our kids to articulate up from the middle school to the high school. That's a testimony to the time investment that you make. Giving example of time investment tonight is Talisa Corcoran, Assistant Principal. Tonight's her wedding anniversary, and she's chosen to be here. She should not be here anymore. That's the kind of investment that I'm talking about. And of course, I would be remiss if I didn't recognize Amy Yellow there, Colleen Nessine, who has been all over the state during the month of May, attending a number of state events, cheering on our students, setting them up for success, and Principal Lundquist, five-year journey, and I am so grateful for your leadership, continuity, strength, really putting kids first. That's your hallmark, and I'm grateful for you.
Appreciate it. Thank you, thank you all, appreciate you all. Thank you.
Moving on, we have another celebration with all of our mathletes. Ms. Powell, Ms. Prentice, we're going to have like...
I got a great email from you a couple of weeks ago, Ms. Powell, can you tell us about why we have these amazing young people here?
Well, I have, I actually had three math teams. I had two fifth, so each team is, like I have a fifth, sixth grade team at Math 1, and a fifth, sixth grade team 2, and so there's four fifth graders and four sixth graders on the team. And then I also had one seventh and eighth grade team with four seventh graders and four eighth graders. We have a regional meet in, this year it was in March in Monroe, is that right? Bellville, Bellville. And we, both teams either came in first or second at the regional meet. The seventh, eighth grade team came in first, and the fifth, sixth grade team came in second. And so, they qualified for the Mega Math Meet, which is a competition against all the regional winners in southern Wisconsin. So, we had some Milwaukee schools there. And so then, the seventh, eighth grade Mega Meet was at Madison College, and the fifth, sixth grade Mega Meet was at UW-Madison. One of the third, my mo-ho, my other fifth, sixth grade team came in third place, it was like a seven-point difference, it's terrible. They should have, they should have gotten to go to the Mega Meet. Anyway, so I had, I was very proud of all of my teams and how well they did, and on both ends, I had some of the highest scores. So, at the regional meet, Josie was the highest scorer, and at the regional meet, Owen was the highest scorer. And so, I felt really proud of my mo-ho mathletes, and I had other high scores like Flynn, and but, I'm catching who's not here, but I, I just was proud of all of them. They worked really well together, and they're kind to each other, and they try hard, and I've not heard one of them ever say an unkind word to their teammates. And they have to do their stuff, they do individually, but there's other things they have to do together, and they, they just do a great job of that. So, we went to the competitions in Madison, and we went, and they were hard. We did not come up first, but we had a good time, and I enjoyed my time with them, and I learned, I learned new things. That's just important, right? And we set goals, we all had goals.
Well, you've taken them so far in such a short period of time. Thank you for your leadership as well, and in providing this opportunity for our young people. As a small token of appreciation, we've created some certificates, the board has, that we would like to make certain get in the hands of the right group of people, but would it be possible for all of us with the board to take a picture together here in the center? I'm all about pictures, by the way. You guys will be trending on social media in no time. How about we have you guys just right in the front, and maybe our board members can kind of come and do the fashion.
Alright, one, two, three, smile! Oh, that's great, I got two.
Appreciate you representing our school mystery so beautifully. Nice job! Next year, right? You gonna be doing it then next year too? My buddy to shake your hand. Hey, we're so proud of you. Keep up the good work. Now, you guys, you're going to work next year? Hi, go, Randy.
So, we have, congratulations, we have to start with you.
We had wonderful commencement exercise yesterday afternoon. Thank you to the board members who were able to attend. We know it's a busy time in people's lives, and lots of celebrations here yet continued into this afternoon, with a retirement celebration. We have seven colleagues who are referring to enter into the next stage of their personal professional journey, and of course, we wish them well. The school year is being capped off with a number of final exams, final projects, or others, and a final musical at the middle school this Thursday night, I think it's at 5:00. There'll be a wonderful production of, is it The Little Mermaid Jr.?
5:00 and 7:00.
5:00 and 7:00. Get tickets for both.
No tickets, just show up.
Show up, okay. And then, I just want to give my annual reminder that you should not fear that school's ending, as school starts in 89 days. If anybody wants to talk about their problem.
In the meantime, the other board members have things to say. Last day of school from 11 to 8, and if you're stinky, it's shared day with the PTL, so go get your after-school ice cream, or the musical ice cream, whatever, but proceeds will go to the PTL, so.
I have a couple things, in addition to preparing for the musical, middle school music department's been super busy. They had their choir concert on the 16th, the sixth grade, and then the seventh and eighth grade did a fantastic job. Our new friend Emma was featured several times, and then just last week on the 28th, I had the middle school music awards where we, where they celebrated their performances from the fiddle band, from the choir, from the full band, and it was just really great to see. So, so thank you to that, that music department there, some of the hardest working middle school music department I've ever seen. So, yeah, thanks to Ms. Inga Britson, Mr. Musceloris, I saw Mr. Dornar in there filling seats in the band during the performance, Mr. Lessing. The other, I did have one other thing that I wanted to just mention, as the school year wraps up, and we look to start, you know, we work over the summer, look to start the new school year. I did want to take a minute and just recognize the staff that we've had on our board committees, and thank Ms. Klinenstein for her work on the education committee, Mr. Miller for community legislative committee, and those staff that served on the personnel committee earlier this year as well. That was Lisa Arneson, Michelle Cleary, John Musceloris, Melissa Olmstead, Amy Slaney, and Kim Zaller. Thanks for the extra time.
Just congratulations to all of the spring sports teams at the high school level, it was just a really impressive showing. You have to stop and pause every once in a while, realize that despite kind of continued success in this district, that doesn't happen everywhere. Didn't happen at my high school, so.
I have one thing to share. Brian and I last week went to the Greater Dane County School Board in social media meeting, it was our second one that we've had. It still was a more logistical type meeting. We spent most of the time working on purpose statement, so that's being revised and will be sent around, and then once we have that purpose statement more fully finalized, I'd like to bring it to the full board for approval to join that group. But they have three meetings set for the year, October, January, and May. We'll be hosting the January one, which will be nice. It was, it's a really nice opportunity to talk with other board members, to talk with other district-level directors, it's just, you know, there's fellowship, there's food, there's a focused agenda. Moving forward, it will be a little bit more topic-specific, but like I said, these first two have been a little bit more logistical, so more to come on that once it gets a little more finalized.
Remind me of the dates or cadence of those.
I can tell you the days right now. October 8th, January 15th, and May 7th are what have been proposed right now. Just trying to move around, you know, not in September, whenever it was just back to school, trying to be aware of other things that are going on, so that's, those are the proposed dates. Nothing else than 3E, citizens' comments. Alright, 4, personnel transactions.
Motion by Leah, seconded by Adam, to approve our personnel transaction. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Moving on to number 5, our consent agenda. Would anyone like to come up and discuss either of those items? Would anyone like to make a motion to approve? Second? Motion by Joel, seconded by Leah. All those in favor of approving our consent agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Number 6, discussion items, committee member report. Scott, we have you as the gentleman of the transportation.
So, buildings and councils did not meet last week, but they did provide an update.
Finishing the meeting, Joel?
So, we met on the 13th of May, we talked about many of the exciting things. Biggest things were through most of the tax receipts, we're at 73%, which is what we expect to receive or not receive, which is what, in line with what's happened other years, still have fall receipts that come in, around 4.8% as we look at that. We reviewed the budget calendar, and you know, we're very excited, because audit season's coming, it's exciting for all of us. And then, the last thing we did was we just reviewed policy 623, because we had removed policy 682, so just to make sure that all of the necessary duties and recording of the finance group were properly laid out in policy. Next meeting is June 10th at 4:30 virtually.
Joel, any questions for Joel? Carly, could you ladies talk about safety and wellness?
Yeah, sure. We met on May 20th, and the first topic we went through is policy review around administering, around student medication administration, where the big change that's being proposed, it'll come aboard the full board, is to allow those in grade 6... that'll come before the full board is to allow those in grade six to twelve to self-administer over-the-counter prescription medications with the exception of controlled substances. So we spent a bit of time on that, talked about that policy. There's a couple of edits we're going to look into, including having an attorney review and potentially adding parental waiver for, in order to allow that to happen. So we'll see that come back to the full board shortly. It does have to get published. Our policy around that does have to be published in the newspaper by end of August, so we'll keep that going. Equity updates. We got an update on the work with the equity team that Equity Council has been doing. They had their last meeting a couple of weeks ago, and we are looking at doing the intercultural development inventory with a limited group of people to, it's an assessment that will help gauge where each individual and where the entire group is at in terms of cultural competence, the ability to adapt to cultural differences, and we think it'll be a good, help us get a good gauge as to what our next steps might be with the equity work. And so I did just want to take another moment to thank that, all the work that they've done over the past couple of years to get us to where we are now and recognizing that the work that we're doing helps make sure that all of our students get a quality education and are prepared for the world that they're going to enter when they leave here. So thank you for that work. The last thing we got, we talked a little bit about mental health update, where we kind of reviewed a lot of the supports that have been put in place since the first of May. We talked about how the additional counselors that we've had on staff or in the buildings over here, we talked about the service dogs, which seem to be the most popular thing that we've done with the kids. We talked a little bit about how we plan for the fall and, you know, what that looks like as we navigate returning, and especially navigating, you know, we see our students have a wide variety of needs, and so we're working on how to navigate that. We also talked a little, you may have seen in your emails, about the survey that the school district sent out about what parents, families, community members need in terms of support, which is going to help, the answers to that are going to help us determine how to frame the grant that we'll seek from the federal government of the project server grant, which is the Service School Emergency Response to Violence, a federal grant program that helps us refer from traumatic events that have disrupted learning. That was most of the update. We will not meet again until July fifteenth.
Thank you. Anyone have any questions? Adam, do you have anything for the middle school department?
That was a committee that did not meet, I think it was.
Thank you. Moving on, six B, ICKLAD.
You're welcome, guys. Watch the song.
So, thanks for the opportunity to have our kindergarten team come back to share their learnings of past year with the literacy program and the work that we've had. I mean, we're like, we've been working about two or three years now, but now we're finally seeing the fruits and the culmination of it. So I have here with me Kirk Nichols. I guess you're lucky you chose yourself, okay?
Sure, Kirk Nichols.
I've been sharing with the board Act Twenty, the education committee and our full board meeting. I wanted to just, you know, reiterate instead, Act Twenty was passed last summer in 2023, also called the legislative, and it's really looking at moving away from a balanced literacy model to more of a science of reading approach, with looking at phonics, reading awareness, decoding all those pieces that make up quality reading. I've had this slide a couple of times, just reminding people of the workforce, especially with new board members, of the balanced literacy model with more read-alouds, shared reading, guided reading, memorization of sight words, three cueing system, which was specifically laid out in legislation districts cannot do anymore, with teaching students how to read, how to decode words. You can still cue students and help students understand comprehension, but just being very careful with the phonics piece. Moving more towards the science of reading approach, learning what those components are, really teaching how students how to sound out words phonetically, and then decoding those words, more whole group, very explicit instruction, and Wisconsin's movement of instruction. Again, just looking at what Act Twenty explicitly covers, I'll need to be in a quality resource. And then our journey from summer of twenty-two, so it's been about a two-year journey for us, whether it's been book studies, letters training, which we've talked about before with this team, materials review, choosing of resource, school visits, so just have a nice summary slide for those who haven't been part of our conversation about where we have been and where we are and where we're going next year with full implementation. So what started our journey was looking at our data. And our data around proficiency in English Language Arts in the third grade board exam wasn't too hot. So we have our five-year trend here, and this is the statewide data. So statewide, you know, before the pandemic, I think eighteen, nineteen, close to forty percent of our students were considered proficient or advanced. We don't have data then in nineteen twenty due to COVID, but we can see data after COVID, right? And then the state's still pulling out of it. If you click against it, you'll see our data, and we're higher than the state level by about ten percent throughout, and we're regaining as well. But our hopes is with the training that staff has had, as well as looking at our resources and our approach, we will, we will, we believe we will. So what does that mean? Actually, see, I think I ordered my slides. Okay, you're good. Okay. What does that mean? So, actually, if you go to the next slide, I'm a little bit, so I apologize. When we look at switching resources and learning about how we teach phonics and decoding better, we wanted to share with the board how our kids are doing from last year's cohort of kindergartners, and as the top graphic, to this year's group of kindergartners. So I'm going to present that in two different ways. This is the proficiency data. When we talk about proficiency, where we have the green and the blue, that students are considered at benchmark or advanced currently at the kindergarten level. And that level is based on the sixty-fifth percentile. So, am I going back to slide C now? Thanks. So sixty-fifth percentile is an important number when we talk about proficiency. So I want to pull an example from the board exam. So a board exam is the exam students from grades three, three and eight. And I pulled the table, which is the subject scores. So at home, when you get your students' board exams, they add a score, six hundred, five hundred and seventy, whatever that is. There was then some norming in this percentile table to say, okay, if students scored, students were at the sixty eighth, sixty third, sixty fifth-ish percentile, if they scored that number, they'll be considered proficient. So sixty-fifth percentile was the number, either in math or in ELA, about that number is what's considered proficient. So, that's why, then, go back to the previous slide, Steve, thanks. So students that who are considered at benchmark in green or advanced are at that sixty-fifth percentile or higher. It's a pretty high standard, which is cool to see. We'll also see why our scores in the state are, there's forty percent kids who are at that sixty-fifth percentile or higher. So this is one way to look at our data. If you look at the top, we can see, you know, kids are starting off great in the fall, but then in the twenty-two, twenty-three school year, by winter and then by spring, they're not as proficient. However, now with implementation of CKLA and some new pieces here, our kids are not falling necessarily, but by winter, we're up to close to sixty percent of our kids being proficient. We have a different spring, which we're talking internally about to figure that piece out. On the next slide, which looks at five risk. So within FEX bridge, it also assesses risk. What is the risk level of students potentially having learning concerns or learning issues? So it's a little different way of looking at it, not necessarily percentages, but it's more a screener, a few of it. Tapping at is the twenty-two, twenty-three school year, so here it started off pretty strong, about eighty percent of students, that's seventy-nine point two, are considered low risk, about having some type of learning concern. And then by winter, that number decreases, which is good, and by spring, it decreased more last school year. This school year, again, our students are starting off, you know, seventy-six point six percent. We're increasing the number of kids then by winter, the eighty-two point four percent were considered low risk. So again, moving in the right direction with kids' growth and what they're learning. But again, the spring, we're trying to figure out what kind of pieces that do we need to more intensive interventions for kids? How do we support kids from that January to May time to keep the growth going instead of not having kids grow as much when we have low risk? So we want to be honest with that, but we are seeing movement in the right direction in general. We just got to figure out that spring piece a little bit more. This is where I hand over to the cool people.
One of the things we're really excited about is we started using a phonemic awareness program last year called HIGRDE in kindergarten, and this year, Fort K started using it with their students as well. And then the pictures you see are part of our skills. CKLA has two strands, it's got skills and then knowledge. And skills focuses on phonemic awareness and phonics. These are some of the activities we do on the left. We use large letter cards for chaining, so they'll make a word and then we'll change one of the sounds. In the middle, they each have an individual folder that we switch out the letters in so that they can practice making words, and we switch it out based on the new sounds, the phonics that we're learning. And the last one is our sound hall. One of the things that's really neat about the program is when they're learning a new sound, we show them pictures, and then they also use a mirror so they can see what their mouth is doing, where their tongue is, what their teeth should look like. And we're seeing really great results with the kids right from the beginning of the year being able to make those sounds correctly and recognize those errors with letters that are trickier to be able to hear reference between like "duh" and "vuh", but they're able to see it and feel it, and we talk about voice to unvoice. So it's just really neat to see what they're picking up on and all the different things that we've been able to teach them through the program.
I didn't correct you with this question, so sorry. Has speech and language technologists shared any ahahs or happiness or observations?
I know a while with one of my students, he is dismissed from his other speech program, and probably will be from this one as well soon too, but I know she's used a lot of similar pictures, so that I think, she was very excited that we're using that in our program as well and have them displayed in the classroom for the kids to use.
I also have one that was dismissed this year as well, and they use the same visual pictures as what we do in our classroom.
So continuity is something that we've been trying to have, that students aren't necessarily seeing these tools. Outside of the classroom, we're going to pull out area for speech and language that is being integrated in our speech pass, have done letters training with us, CKLA training with us, trying to make sure it's a comprehensive approach for students who need that speech and language support.
They've really done a nice job, too. If one of my kids is getting pulled out and we're working on a decodable book, she'll take the book and they'll practice the sounds right in the actual text that the kids are reading in the classroom. So it's really worked well.
So this next slide here, a little copy on the left.
Should I play it?
Yeah, just one cycle for the video. I have an aspiration to say, I thought I could include that picture on the left there. So our curriculum, you've just seen it now, okay? You didn't forget the bottom says, that has a man here. So in our curriculum, one thing that we are going to continue to develop is the writing component piece. And so one of the biggest things you'll see on the left there intertwined with our skills is handwriting. In the past, we used handwriting about tiers, and CKLA has their own handwriting program within it. So you can see some really nice handwriting there. I'd say at least ninety percent of my class handwriting looks like this, which is really fantastic.
You just say like the best one, that's amazing.
I also. So this is just a very simplistic example where they had to look at the picture, read the two sentences, and then choose which one matched it, and then write down the sentence. I did not take another picture, but another example of response would be after we're reading our decodable books, then they would have responses. One would be such as this, where they had to choose an answer for the question, and then others are a response. So they are gaining some writing practice within that. They'll get more of that when they get to first grade, of course, but a great introduction in kindergarten for those pieces. So on the right, so this is a video of my class about two weeks ago. One thing that I have found with CKLA is the vast improvement of all of my readers, and we have countless had conversations of our students not having the fear of reading anymore, the confidence and the bravery of attacking a word and decoding it and knowing what to do. A short story, last week during guidance, Running had told me, she popped in as they were in the free choice playroom playing. One of my students was saying, how do you spell a certain word? And one of the kids just said, well, tap it out. So it's clearly like second nature for them now. One of our decodable books that we unfortunately aren't getting to, we just finished unit nine. Well, next year they will get correct. So is it nine and ten that they get them in first? So the last either unit or unit and a half or so, they will get again starting in first grade, so it's a nice review for them. But my students see that book bin of books on the shelf, and they're like, why aren't we reading stacked? The next decodable book? And I'm like, well, you're going to get that next year. But it's that they're so passionate about getting to that next book. So what you'll hear in the video as well is what I find extremely impressive is the voice that you'll hear and in the black bin fashion that they use now when it comes to a question mark and exclamation. Set, read.
A gift from mom. Once mom got the kids a gift. The gift was in a pink black box. Mom set the box on the rug. It's a truck that says, "No." Mom said, "It's not a truck." I bet it's a hat, man said. No, mom said, "It's not a hat."
Ready, read.
Then the box said, "Rug rug." Dad slid the lid off the box. A dog said, "Oh." It's a dog, said Ian. Yes! And then said, "Mom loves us."
Let's try that sentence one more time at the end. Look at the words.
Mom loves us.
Excellent. Everybody kiss those brains. Fantastic. So I had to reread that last statement because I was recording, so I thought they read it incorrectly, but they did, they read it I, which was great. So you might be thinking to, what is a decodable reader? So that is all words that you can, as I said before, tap out or decode. So the word cat, cat. So we do talk about tricky words as well, which would be in the past where we might call them sight words or popcorn words, those type of things, but in our curriculum, we call them tricky words. And so we underline parts of the word, most of the time there's either one or two or some of the sounds that they can decode from the word, but there are tricky parts, so.
They're there.
Yeah.
Right here.
Correct, correct. So, but, and this is not, this was not practiced at all, besides, we read it two times before this video. So that's pretty impressive for where they have come.
Are you available for remedial handwriting? Could it send me a graduate?
All right, then the last slide. So this is showing the other components of CKLA. This is our knowledge portion, and then we have Boost, which I'll talk about after. But so knowledge is that vocabulary and comprehension piece. And so we dive really deep into some topics like plants, the five senses, we did Native Americans this year. And at the end of each unit, there's time for a culminating activity where you really get to tie all that learning together. And the kids can really showcase what they've learned from it. And so under the wow work, we were learning about deciduous trees in our plant year. Then the kids know that vocabulary word and they got to show what each, what the trees look like throughout each season. And so it's very hands-on. Then they got to do some finger painting, which they loved. And then right is one of my students. We had a story that for our unit that was all about stories. And one of our stories was the three little pigs. So we imagined that we were the pigs and we had to build our house so that the big bad wolf didn't blow it over. And so after they built it, they tried to knock it over and see if it would have stood against the wolf. And so you can see that thumbs up. He really enjoyed it and his house stayed standing. So they just, they really love those knowledge units because they really dive deep into the topics. And some of the vocabulary words, you wouldn't expect the kids to remember the definitions, but as they're having conversations with one another, they're using those vocabulary words. So one of the words was gradually. And my kid said, I can walk gradually down the hall. They're really using those words. So it's really cool to see. And then on the left, we have Boost, which is a program that we piloted this year. And you can use it on an iPad or a Chromebook. And it's really tied into the skills portions of the phonics, the phonemic awareness. And it's student-led. And so if a student is working on a specific skill and if they're really struggling with it, the program will give them more time to practice that skill before moving them on to a different skill. And so students can work at their own pace. And what's nice of the teacher is that we can log in and we can kind of see which of those skills they're struggling with. And they've got lessons that you can print out. And it's almost like an intervention that you can work with the kids on. And then for the summer, to avoid that summer slip, we are actually going to have families using Boost at home so they can keep practicing those skills. And hopefully that will avoid some of that summer slip that tends to happen.
Any questions for the team?
Are you asking?
I want to question you earlier to ask if I was a little bit between the winner and the speaker.
Yeah. Yeah, we talked about that a lot. And obviously, expectations at the end of the year are much higher than what they are in the wintertime. And so definitely, it's a common, ongoing conversation that we're having, but.
For first year.
Yes.
For first year.
Seeing, again, the confidence that every student has is just that alone is phenomenal to see.
You said that, and I was like, what's the equivalent? Like giving kids that confidence piece is so huge.
Yeah. That's, it's funny that you said that. I've been saying this to Sarah for years. When we got Bridges, I was like, oh, yes, I love Bridges. And they're like, what is the Bridges equivalent literacy? Here it is.
I think we're, even though with Fast Bridge, those scores don't look as great in the spring, we're really noticing that through each of the skills units, there's assessments at the end. And our, the kids are doing really well on the skills in each, each unit. So yeah, we're still trying to figure that out, but they're really getting the skills in each unit, which is great, being able to apply them to their reading.
It's interesting to see the difference of we, Fast Bridge has a sight word assessment, but there's only a few of the words that are the tricky words that we learn. And then when we've given a tricky word assessment, I know my class, I had two kids that missed one of twenty words that we assessed on. So it was, it was interesting to see that.
And that's the risk assessment essentially, is it?
Provides a potential risk of any.
And is that pretty, is that, just humor me because I'm new and I haven't had kindergarten for a long time. So as far as the risk assessment during kindergarten, is that pretty much, is that pretty specific for kindergarten? Because they're just starting out to just kind of evaluate and see, is there learning disabilities? Is there any issues?
Yes, it's nationally norm. So all the students who take that assessment, looking at that five percentile risk and Fast Bridge has a sunset of students at this percentile, how are we doing reading future and those kinds of things?
Okay.
Yeah.
On the speech and language, are we noticing, are you noticing? I'll get one here, but are you noticing a reduction in children that are students that are needing to be referred? Or is it just that it is, moves more smoothly?
Not yet. I think it's, we had students who grew up COVID before COVID time, and we're just getting those students now into 4K and K. So I think we'll be able to answer that question probably two or three years out, I would think, probably.
Yeah, I wonder how, the difference on how quick they'll be dismissal, because they are so qualifying at an earlier, younger, and quicker rate than we have in the past, but pre-COVID. But we haven't looked at the dismissal rates.
Next year, probably.
I'll ask it again. Chart will just start going straight off.
I think this is probably the third time you folks have given up your time and your talents to update the board about where we are. And I know that you're representing an entire group of kindergarten teachers. Won't you please go back and extend our deepest gratitude to them as well as for us to personally share that with you all tonight, really remarkable work. The love you have for our kids, it's just, it feels so good to see. And I can't believe these are kindergartners reading this. It's just unreal, so tip of the hat.
Say, if you want to send us little videos every now and then if kids read books.
I have a, I have a good one. Could I just share that the results are also due to the strong teamwork that happens around the table weekly in our collaborative team meetings? The dialogue that happens amongst that team is rich, deep, reflective, and student-centered. And it's just really humbling to be part of it every week.
Thanks for setting the conditions for those conversations to have been really remarkable work.
I thought that it would be a good idea now that the legislative session is coming on in this transition period to look forward to what might happen in the fall elections and going forward. That might be a good idea, just to take a few minutes just to kind of sum up how the legislative session ended. I won't go into detail on all of these things, but if there's things that we have any questions about, I will try and answer them. And we'll see how it goes. So do you want to go on? So first, just a summary of the things that passed into law. The big one that we just learned a lot more about, how that's going is Act Twenty, the literacy, the literacy bill that seemed to be a significant, significant amount of time and effort gone into that, this legislative session. Other curricular mandates here require one-half credit personal financial literacy, which is already in our course catalog as required, I believe, for this seniors this next year, this coming year. And a couple of other smaller, smaller things. School safety. Some of these, so we've talked about the stock that funding provided for the Office of School Safety. We would expect that to come back in the budget discussions of this upcoming year. The other thing out of here, the bottom two, I think are more definition-related. The reporting incidents that occur on school grounds is just a new mandate to collect data, report it to DPI. It's supposed to go on report cards. I wish I understood a little bit more about the background as to why this came up. It just seems to be more, more overhead on everybody to do this. This is all crimes or public information. But that will be in the reporting department that impacts us. Student health and wellness, these are, these just focus around helping, allowing, the bottom two, the LUKA gun and the short-acting term, or short-acting program that I later just allow those prescriptions to be issued to the school rather than individuals and give school a little more liability to administer, administer some of those. And the epinephrine just is a definition change to a delivery system rather than a pot of jitter. There are a couple of grant programs, none of which, the top two of which aren't really relevant to us. But the technical education equipment grants, that is an increase in the amount that is allowed to be granted, could be something that comes into, that we're able to take advantage of. Summary of some licensing changes. This, the top one is, it has to do with DPI and being able to issue tier-one licenses for a broader definition of backgrounds, clinical backgrounds. And some of these other ones are also, the second one is kind of a definition change as well. And then volunteer school administrators, I think we've talked about before, allowing school board members to volunteer. So then the other two big things that I thought I would just, as a reminder, bring back, like the major thing that we looked at in the last legislative session was the budget and the budget process and the changes to education. And so here's just kind of a high-level summary of some of those, three-hundred-twenty-five-dollar per pupil increase on the revenue limit in the next two years. One thing it's important to notice, to note is that, that because revenue limits have not increased for so many years leading up until now, this is a great increase for us, this is helpful, but it's nowhere near what action we should be over the years that, since about 2009. Had we, had revenue limits been increased over time, it would have been, I can't remember the number exactly, but we would have had, they would have done that maybe about $2,300 per pupil over that time period. So significantly less than the inflation. The other reminder in here is the special education reimbursement increased to up to thirty-three percent of our costs. That is dependent on whether or not they've allocated enough money to cover that, so it's not guaranteed. We'll get the thirty-three percent. It's more of a, of a cap, but that, as a reminder, we don't, we, we cover all of those costs and get reimbursed a small percentage of them. And then the guaranteed U W based on college rankings or high school rankings. So then, just a quick summary of things that came in the legislature were passed, sent to the government's office, and vetoed. Here, it's hard to say if these will come back. They might. Moving on. I think it's important to keep an eye on what's going on in the state and local courts as well, not just the legislature. Given the makeup of our legislature, it had several challenges to things, including, one thing to keep an eye on, a new challenge to Act Ten was just heard in Dane County Circuit Court last week, I believe. There was brought by a group of unions arguing that the treatment of municipal unions and the separation of public safety police unions from how those are treated is unconstitutional. It will, it'll make its way before the state Supreme Court, I'm sure. I don't know when. The other thing to keep an eye on is that in, in the budget bill where the veto happened, that Governor Eto's keepers has partial line out of veto that extended that revenue limit increase for four hundred years has been challenged directly to the state Supreme Court by Wisconsin Manufacturers and Commerce just arguing that he doesn't have, he overstepped the actual power that the London veto gives him. And then there is a challenge to a part of, Act One Hundred has to do with how Act Twenty, the literacy bill is funded. There is, he did a partial line out of veto of it that basically tried to make the funding structure more flexible. And the, and that's been challenged by the Republicans in Dane County Circuit Court arguing that he only has that authority on appropriations bill and that's not an appropriations bill. So with all that in mind, I put a few thoughts together of kind of what's next, what to look forward to next. One thing that was kind of left hanging out there, we have talked a little bit about the school start date rule. Toward the end of the session, it seemed like there was some movement to try and allow districts to have some more flexibility through a proposed rule change for DPI. He, the governor did not actually sign that rule change, so it never made it to the legislature. And what's been, it's one of those things that they've asked for continued outreach to the governor's office to help push that forward so that it does get to the legislature next, next year. New maps, new legislature, like all this could just totally change next year. The priorities could change. All kind of depends on who gets into office, how, if incumbents are returned, how they may or may not change their approach to, to things. We, our new representatives are Todd Novak and Howard Markline. Todd Novak was a co-sponsor of the school safety bill. Howard Markline is co-chair of Joint Science. That gives us an opportunity to, to focus our advocacy directly to someone who does more, who has impact. Trying to look forward to the next session and what might come. Certainly, we know that the priority, I may know the priority is funding, funding structures, better funding. And knowing that that's going to become a focus a year from now, one of the things we've heard is that focusing on special education reimbursement may be an easier angle with legislators. Or there may be legislators more willing to work on that rather than just straight increases to the revenue limit, which would be a huge help to our budget if we can get more of that money reimbursed. All this in knowing that there's still a multi-billion dollar budget through the state. So I, I mean, I think one of the things that I would like to see is too, I think that there's definitely, you know, as we look forward to our own focus and action advocacy, obviously, the legislature controls a lot of what we do. But, but I think there's more we can and should look to do in terms of community outreach, education on these issues, whether that's directly with, with parents, with the community, with the village, with the chamber, whatever we can do to help improve those funding streams. It may come from revenue limit increases. It may come from more business relationships or, you know, the business partner not more up or those kinds of things that'll, that'll help all of us grow. I don't know what exactly that looks like over the next year or two, but I think that's, that's my assessment. Nowhere future focus would be. Anyone's got any other thoughts?
Any questions, gentlemen?
Specific questions, because it's on my mind. I don't know if Dr. Swann or Scott can answer it. The percentage point change on special education reimbursement and coverage of costs, do we know how much that translates to? I'm going to look to Scott.
So within our special education budget, there is a portion of that budget that is eligible for special education categorically. Not everything is, you know, we get federal money from the federal government, we can't get reimbursed on that. You know, that kind of stuff. There's also some local costs that we pay for in special ed that is not eligible for categorically. But in this year's budget, about 4.7 million of our specialized budget is eligible for categorically and will receive, when I say eligible, it makes it sound like there's a chance that we don't. We will receive reimbursement. To Carly's point is, will we get thirty-three percent? Will we get something more than thirty-three percent? To answer your question, if I kind of do the reverse math, ten percent of 4.7 is four hundred and seventy, so one percent would be about forty-seven thousand. So at this whole.
Yeah, that's exactly.
I know, I gave a little bit more information.
Scott, we give about 2.3 million-ish out of our local fund ten to fund twenty-seven to help support special education.
It's significantly higher.
It's gone even higher.
And I consider what they appear in mainly three months. I just need to look it up.
The other piece that we thought we just wanted to help the board to appreciate too is safety. And well, this is going to be looking at Act One Ninety-four, which was the law allowing for parking to be used in our schools, which we've never had an issue with that. But I know our school nurses would like to begin to get the training on that and be prepared to have that impact if they find themselves in that circumstance. And we continue to be in touch with the universities as it relates to the student teaching piece. A lot more flexibility is being laid out by the Department of Public Destruction in light of the act that Carly thoughtfully referenced. These are starting to find their way into actual administration now rules. These are starting to find their way into actual administration now rules, which helps us to better implement. Exciting. May have budget buying this, to be sure. Thank you for your leadership and putting that together. We're good, well done.
Number seven, moving on to our action item, 7A, consideration of strategic plan priority goals.
Thank you, board members, for the conversation you recently shared during your workshop. You may recall, maybe just for those in the audience, just to kind of bring them up to speed, the board met, what, back in late April was it, whereby they began to identify what would be out of their strategic plan, the objectives that rise to the top that are most important to an infinity diagram type of activity. The board identified student achievement, life indicator goal, and well-being as being three areas that they would like us to be considering as a district-wide priority on their strategic plan, which is called Breakthrough 2032. And so, we thought by breaking up the strategic plan into four-year increments, the first set of goals would take us through likely 2028. And we took the framework that the board had come up with, turned the ideas around each of these areas, and then studied the data behind each of these areas so that we could establish quality benchmarks in which we could then be sharing with our leadership teams in our school sites, so that that information can cascade throughout the organization and all of us rowing the boat in essence in the same direction. And so, from a very high level perspective, that's their first step. We'd like to share this with you tonight based upon the feedback we received from our data, our students' performance, and then the feedback that we've heard from our board. The next step is what would likely happen then come June 17th, in which the board has thoughtfully said, well, gee whiz, how do we go about now aligning our resources to make certain that the board's vision, potentially these goals, if you so see it as that tonight, can we work with Dr. Finko from WISF, Wisconsin Association of School Boards to, to align and maybe even create some of our own individual board goals? These are district goals. And so, tonight I've asked for my friends, Brian and Sarah, to come on up and explain how did we get to this point as a senior leadership team over the course of the past couple of weeks? Mike, can you talk, Sarah, with us about our student achievement goal, please?
Yeah, I will, thank you. So yes, as Steve mentioned, our, for the 2028 school year, the 2027, 2028 school year, to meet our student achievement goal, and that goal, we decided to look at growth. We just had a conversation about kindergarten data and looking at the growth from fall to winter to spring. Let's talk briefly about proficiency. Proficiency is great, right? We want all our kids to be, or we want a certain percentage of kids to get to that proficiency level, but that doesn't mean that all kids are really watching that growth piece. That growth piece is important for us to make sure that those kids who maybe are underperforming, those kids who are performing, those kids who are performing really well, how do we continue to push them? So really individualizing, looking at the student needs in the classroom, during camp or MTI or wind time. So the growth piece is where we want to go as a school district, to see how kids are bringing up fall, winter, and spring, and at which level they're going at. So we'll be looking at our assessments and identifying those assessments where we can monitor that growth.
We have on average two to three different assessments that allow us to discern whether or not a student is growing against themselves. We call it triangulated data. And so, maybe we may not have success in one area on that triangle. There might be two other indicators of that triangle, that other assessments that help us demonstrate that the child is achieving in both math and ELA. And with it being different grade levels, we felt like it would be appropriate just to begin focusing at each building, at each grade level, on their individual universal assessments. So, what we'd like to do, assuming that this could meet with the board's approval, is to have updates to the board, likely through the Education Committee, a mid-year check-in, and then a full-year check-in with the board at the end. So progress to, to work through the Education Committee with the help of our, of our principals and staff members. Now, the life indicator goal was born out of our Prepared for Future document, which is our graduation readiness plan. And we also have in addition to, Brian, Aaron has also been instrumental in helping us with this. So, Brian, Mike, you want to start us off, please?
No, I want to start us off. I'll see the first three of them, okay?
Thank you, Sarah.
So the board identified service learning, and Silver Court was brought up many times in our conversations. And as we brought these indicators back to our admin consulting, they started asking really good questions and really reminding us these are district goals. Silver Court happens at high school, right? So how can we add Silver Court captains outside of the school day? So we want to control what we can control. We can control the school day and what happens in the district. So, the, the team started asking questions, well, we can track and we can share what we do for school events, or classroom events, or group events, or applied teams, volunteering. Can we showcase that and build upon that? Because we can control that. We can control the messaging, we can control opportunities. So that's a direction we would like to recommend to you all, is to look at what we can do in the school day for community-based service activities. In talking with our principal teams, the minimum of two, every student has a minimum of two, there's definitely an achievable number that we can celebrate when we think about how many kids we have in our district, 2,500, 2,400, you know, that's 48,000 to 5,000 service opportunities minimum that's happening. We know for Silver Court, that's, that's currently still in place, we'll still have high schoolers who are above and beyond, but again, we're a school district, so how can we promote service learning from our youngest minds all the way up?
Is it annual?
Yeah, the annual.
Okay. Clarify that, that's a good one.
Well, just because the rest were projected out to 22.
You're right.
And you.
And I know that there's a lot of talk about our, even our youngest learners being able to incorporate that too, and that might not be as, and so if we can incorporate kindergartners doing to service or community learning, that just becomes, like, it becomes part of what we do, as students, and kind of building that up.
And I mean, they do stuff like that now, I don't think it's kindergarten, but first or second grade, they go like Reiki, all that stuff.
Yep. So it may not be something new, just something that we're watching.
In every grade.
Just, I'll give you any pause. Okay.
My only question is, so we have two events planned and like, 10 kids are out sick, like, do they not have like a makeup community service event?
They get what you're saying. But the opportunity is there for all students. We can't control the student outside influences again, so.
Right, the way it's worded, we say all students will contribute, so do we want to say something like all students?
All students?
Have the opportunity to, or something, or students will, yeah, because then I worry, like, do we pigeonhole ourselves into having makeup services?
Yeah, it's like the idea of opportunity.
Right, like, we'll give you the opportunity, you might not be, maybe you're out sick, or maybe you have allergies and you can't go Reiki, whatever.
Or like with Reiki, or what is, what is the idea of opportunity and can all kids actually participate, like kids that have disabilities?
Access is a piece, as we look through that one tonight, and we do with the mature set of IT and the team developed, or faculty, you know, also look at our opportunities for this, and that will be a good discussion in buildings of, we have these opportunities, or we have these field trips, or we have these pieces, can all access them?
Okay.
Good, good call. Second one, school sponsored activities was an important piece. I don't believe, and we talked in the board retreat, that we identified the grade level spans, which we put a stack in, and there's many school sponsored activities. We want to maintain the equivalent of at least the national average, and Aubrey was very helpful in finding what that national average was, which has been indicated here it could change, you know, each year, each time span, finding that data, but we can share that information at a future time, too.
We are in surpassing.
Yeah. I'll pause, sorry, I have to keep going.
Instead of a national average, would it be better to just go against the state average? Would that data be available? Would that be more relevant to?
We are, I'm not aware of the, that data, I don't know if we can see state data on that, it's not something that, as a district, we're required to provide, you see? So I don't know.
I'm just curious.
Yeah, good question, good question. The third piece then is the advanced coursework piece. We have initially talked about IBAP, CAPSOL during admin consult. We wanted to expand the term advanced coursework because we have youth apprenticeship, experiential learning, work-based learning, so making it more encompassing. We do have a lot of work right now looking at work-based learning and pieces, and we think about the IB program and CP piece, the career exploration piece. So we didn't want to lose that in the definition or the examples of advanced coursework, so that was the fashion we have in that. Especially with all of our community partnerships and the community coalition that we're on, we don't want to ignore the business partnership and employment piece.
Do you think that, I was glad Steve was there, do you think that experiential learning is fine versus having no workplace learning opportunities?
With, with WPL, we can spell it out.
Oh, that's true.
Yeah.
I was just thinking more in terms of other people seeing it.
Yeah, this is for your eyes, and I will be different for other guys.
So I assume then, excuse me, if we're going to expand definition, that will be on the baseline as this percentage is there and then 4% on that?
Yeah, we'll have to, we'll have to define CAPSOL courses and really specific. Any questions on the first three?
And this will increase by 4% by 2028?
Correct.
And away.
Come on, Steve. Add it to the list.
So number four is, when we really look at our attendance rate, we really have a high percentage, we're already at 95%. And our goal by 2028 is to maintain that. We want to keep, we're doing the campaign initiatives this year, you see a lot more, hopefully you see a lot more posters and kind of presentations about attendance matters, and so we want to continue at a 95% rate or higher, so we just don't want to dip with that. It's hard to be already that close, so.
So do we mean all students or the average student attendance rate is 95%? Do we have specific kids who aren't at 95? I would assume yes, that some kids are truant, so the way this is worded, that all students?
The district average or school average?
Yeah, I think, I think we need to change it to be the, you know, attendance average will remain, otherwise we're going to shoot ourselves in the foot because we'll have some truant kids.
Yeah, that's our thing.
And then, our last one, which we talked about, is the team is, is creating by, so by 2028, we will identify and create and conduct an alumni survey. Don't figure out what kids are at, where they're going, and I think some, I can't remember if it was Aubrey or one of the principals that said, just at homecoming, you need a QR code and let people put it on the new screen scoreboard, and, you know, we got a lot of alumni that are trying to get some more, you know, just getting participation, so, yeah, so by 2028, we'll do those things.
So thank you for taking Joel and my ramblings, post-its, and notes.
That's exactly what I had in mind. So I nailed it.
What did you call it, word salad?
Something like that.
I had a lot of word salad, so thank you, thank you for making it into, into chewable chunks of word salad.
For the senior leadership team, that a couple of times on this topic, but we also wanted to take many of the ideas around well-being, and we think we've created, hopefully, something equally pleasing to the board. Brian, might you be able to speak to that, please?
Yeah, we had a really great conversation with the principals, specifically talking about the survey and what K5 was really interested in being involved in it, because their voices and how they feel, if you feel included when you're K5, it's going to, it's going to keep being feeling included, 6, 8, 9, 12. There really isn't anything for K5 right now. And so what can we research to be able to identify, conduct a survey that asks them other questions to the YRBS, but that's at an age-appropriate and more easier level for them to administer as well? We also then at the middle of high school level had a lot of conversations about the YRBS. As we've talked many times, we still don't have the YRBS results from the middle school. It will be almost two years since we had our students take it this upcoming October. So we still have a few more months before we get to two years, but it's so delayed. And where the principals really had an issue with is that we can't follow up with kids. So if somebody says in that survey and just checks and knows across the board, like, I feel like I don't belong, I'm not doing the help, I'm at a high risk of suicide, all of those things, we can't seek the student out one or two years, almost a year and a half or two years ahead, and we can't, we can't connect. And so we really had discussions about where we want this data to continue to increase, but at the building level, we really want to focus on well-being as going back to a building goal and asking some of those questions in informal surveys, so that we can re-follow up and, and just have this be a collective increase and something we really believe in and want to be increased as, as a whole entity as a building. So I think we're going to do, we're going to do the work on multiple different levels, but specifically at the YRBS because it's scientific, it's research, right, it's, it's really there. We have some increases and we wanted to increase. The reason KA is a little bit lower is because four years ago when we did it, it was over 80%. And so if it is over 80%, again, we want to see growth in it, because we always want to see that growth, but it's at a really high level. And then we want high school to increase even more because they're, they're lower this year.
Is that two percentage points versus 2%? Like, you know what I mean?
We want the whole.
The whole score to go from 80 to 80 to.
Correct.
That question.
As we, for as you all, sort of flush these goals out more, I would love to hear more about what specific strategies we're going to be implementing to try to increase the sense of belonging, or if, you know, the buildings decide that they want to do, you know, surveys, folks groups, whatever they want to do, as you've mentioned, like more informal. I want to see some of that as well.
And I think that's the.
I know that's like the next.
That's the next step.
Yes, that, that's what I see happening during our data retreat, part of that time being that let's have schools commit to strategies that are researched or evidence-based strategies so that we can effectively enhance some things that we were hoping to see. But we think this is a great start for us, and we're grateful that you helped to kind of winnow down that a little bit and allowed us to put some meat on the bones. We hope it meets with your, with your liking, and if it is, with saving some of the suggestions that were made here tonight, we ask the board please consider approving these. I wanted to run a philosophical question past everyone here, make sure that we're aligned on that. In terms of goals and goal setting, there's different objectives out of that about what you want to achieve. There's the 100% goal of, you know, we need to hit these marks, there's a 50/50 goal like we have at work in terms of growth expectations or what it is, and you set more aggressively on a 50/50 plan. And I wanted to know from your construction of the current numbers, were you more like, we need to hit each and every one of these at 100, and that dictated the percentages? And is that where everyone's at in terms of what our expectations are? Is it, is it a set, a goal that we really can reach, is it a stretch, you know? If it's a stretch goal for us. If it's growth goal for us, and it's not, it's not assuming that there's going to be 100% across the board, as we just even talked about kids participating in service oriented activities, not every child's going to be able to run 10 minutes same, same rate. But we believe that these are stretch goals for us that'll help get us to the next level. And it's our hope that by 2028, we can then be looking at another set of goals and having everybody kind of writing out their own personal. And having everybody kind of writing out their own personal professional practice goals that represent this work in some capacity would be really helpful in the district.
Great question. Thanks for asking.
Can we go back up to that? I appreciate all of these endings. These are great. And I understand and agree with the targeted growth and delivery strategies here. Thank you. But knowing that we do have, you know, some areas where proficiency levels aren't as high as we would like, can you talk about, even if we're addressing growth, how those might impact proficiency levels?
Sure.
So that they're separate, but they're kind of connected?
Yeah. When we think about the proficiency levels, you know, that's a certain percentage. If a kid's 40%, literacy right now, or if he knows. And we know, let's say, third grade math, a third grade reading that there's 60% that are not. We want to make sure that those kids are hitting their goal for any given academic year in order to get us to that proficiency goal. So if we really focus on the goals and interventions and specifically target, do a better job of targeting those skill deficit areas, the proficiency will come. You know, we could have, we could set a proficiency goal of 60%. But by that, then have our eye on every single student's growth. Even the students who are maybe receiving more intensive tiered interventions. That would be a wonder of mine. We have systems in place for that. But if we're really looking at the growth of all students at all levels and being very thoughtful of our interventions, that's what we're pushing forward. And that's the work we're doing right now is to do better jobs with actual literacy and our interventions. So we really want to make sure the work goes hand-in-hand. These new goals go hand-in-hand with our current work to make a seamless process.
Your part of the growth goals allows us to keep track of the individual child as opposed to comparing them against some nebulous group of kids. Second grade becomes third grade. Well, that's fine. The standard, if you will, the benchmark, if you will, will change. But how do we know that the kid is moving? If you focus on the individualization of the child, we can, I think, build the strategies, to your point, that make certain that we're meeting, we're having touch points with each of those kids. We think we can get to both by focusing on the individualization and differentiation. So, stupid question.
Hey, does anyone have any questions, comments? Anyone like to make a comment? Is that it? Motion by Sarah, seconded by Leah, to approve the strategic plan priority goals. All those who favor me, say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Thank you very much. 7B, first reading of Board Policy 190. As you all know, we have been talking about this for a little while now, trying to better articulate and communicate the process that we haven't gone through in terms of negotiating. We've gone through three rounds of it and trying to eliminate confusion, kind of get us all on the same page so that we can be more efficient and effective and productive to address our mutual goals around compensation per staff. We talked about this at our workshop. Does anyone have any questions now, comments, suggestions?
I have a suggestion. Under the meet and confer section, the last.
Oh goodness, wait, I'm sorry, I just stopped. Thomas was supposed to step out of the room. I knew that'd be a time later, I talked about it and then I just kept going. Thank you, Dawn.
Okay, now I have a suggestion. The last sentence in meet and confer, adding the words of mutual interest after topics. So it would read, "Said meeting shall be publicly posted under Wisconsin's open meeting law with discussion topics of mutual interest included on the agenda and meetings minutes from the discussion may publicly available."
Does anyone else have any?
I have a small one, or well, we can decide if it's small and then during the negotiating team. We define it as either the president, vice president, or treasurer. I think we've kind of had that conversation and that's how it's working out. I think we'd be more inclined to not specifically define it in here just given the variation that could happen in here to you, to who is available, who has the time commitment, who is willing and just don't want to lock in somebody just because they happen to fill an office.
I agree. I wonder if. Board representative, sounds like it could be, we could ask anyone to be a representative. Should say at least two board members.
Board member representatives, or typical members. We could put something like typically the president, vice president, treasurer, that doesn't like lock it in. But kind of calls out who we are, who traditionally would be on, but like you said. If you're like, I can't get over to attend these, you know, four or five, then I don't.
Fine, with softening it as well. I do, I mean personally, I do think it is important that, I realize we said may include. I personally do think it's important to have board member representation in those rooms. I recognize the future boards, we feel differently, but I think that that's important to keep in mind.
Do you want to strengthen it, but not super strengthen it, make it should instead of they? They should, but they don't have to? I think they is.
I think it is.
No, I get all of a sudden about the shits and shouts of they's nice.
We don't have in here who the board's chief spokesperson is. I don't know if we want to specify that the board's legal counsel will act as the spokesperson.
No. I think it's a good change.
I wonder if we should just say then that the board will identify.
The spokesperson?
Yeah, I agree.
And maybe it should specifically say that the board will select a chief spokesperson outside of the board of education members or something, even though that sentence says we're going to actively listen. But then there's no question that a board member will not be the chief spokesperson?
Sure.
Select the spokesperson?
I was trying to think of a way to say it. What board will identify a spokesperson? Because we can't approve this tonight anyway at first reading because we're not.
Full, or we can?
We can.
Okay.
Do we want to have anything also related to this? It says participants will listen actively, direct questions to the board. Chief spokesman offers strategies that can open to secondary caucus bargaining sessions. As well, my one other thought was also that, you know, even if you're on, even if you are not on the board's, you know, representatives, that we are going to all meet and discuss, you know, in close, you know, follow-up times.
I thought that, okay, I thought that meant, okay, so that whole second paragraph, board members who attend individual meetings with bargains are represented too. So I thought that meant like, I don't know. I was the only person that took that as like, if we meet with an MHA person outside. I interpreted it as if, if like, yeah, Carly or I or somebody meets with someone on the negotiating team outside of those meetings, that then we don't have any authority. And information from that is shared with the full board. I was meaning more like, you know, we might have two or three people that are representing us and we might be discussing and having caucus sessions. But we're also sharing back everything that we hear with the full board.
So I think that's the old discussions part.
Yeah, it covers both.
Okay then.
Okay.
Or you could say from, I mean, all covers it, but I think it's the all.
Okay.
I can see both ways, thanks for saying.
Under the comparable data section, I think, do we need to put something in there that talks about, I mean, if we kind of do analyzing compared to total remuneration packages to ensure competition? That's really what we're looking at, is comparable data is about the numbers, not necessarily about process, not necessarily about some of the other things that we've been hearing as we look at this. So do we want to, in terms of how we're defining why, how we're as a board using comparable data, it's really to look at, are we competitive or not? And does that do a, I think it might, but I won't ask that question.
By omission, you're saying like that's what the sole focus is?
Because that's what comparable data is.
Yeah, yeah.
And that's why I'm reading that. I can't see what I was still reading. So my only other, my only other thought is on C, should that end with an or? Because we might want to look at, maybe there are like three other schools in the state that are more than 30 miles, but they're like the exact same, all those other things. Maybe we want to look at those and that, I mean, this isn't, this is just what we put our greatest emphasis on, so maybe it doesn't matter.
No, I think all of the logic should be an or. All of it.
Yeah.
I mean, it's, the comparables as we look at it is something that a board can set each year if they wanted to, or whatever it might be. But I think we want to do an or because, for example, within 30 miles finding something that looks like our tax base here is really quite challenging. Right on the edge of county, so I don't know if we can say and then they have a lot of work.
I agree.
So I don't mean personal level language here, I'm going to leave space for that too, but just stepping back and thinking about the whole process, you know, of how this is run. The, I mean, this is how things have worked the last three cycles. And I know it's important to be transparent about it, to put that on paper. The thing we've had, we've talked the base wage definition to death. We've been pretty clear on that and where we feel that we, due to legal exposure interpretation of the rules as they stand and they're acting, that that is our smartest, safest bet in terms of legal exposure. I know that there's disagreement over that. I feel that the meet and confer is how we've done it for the past three years. I know that there is some debate over how might that else be done. I also know that we've talked about pros and cons and potential for that opening up. So I feel like everything here is pretty clearly stated on what we want. My concern is sort of a step back from all of this of, we're doing things legally, I think, in a very clear cut way. Are we entirely hitting the mark on making sure that we are communicating clearly and opening and realizing this is a two-way street with what MHA and what all teachers are most interested in at a time when those considerations can be brought into the budgeting process and then into consideration for meet and confer topics? Feel like there's room for improvement there despite that this is not the characterization of effort and how communication is done. But I am concerned that there, that there's a feeling that the issues that MHA ones do have heard are not always being heard in the timely fashion in the order of when the board can consider to do something about it. This is a long process from budget to negotiation. It depends on the year. I don't have a specific answer right now, but I almost, there's only one element of this that I wanted to bring up for consideration. It may or may not change the language here, but I wanted to at least discuss how we might approach that. And it is in the meet and confer section where we talk about the sequencing of this. Making sure that we're through the definition of base wage or basic negotiation before we move to meet and confer. My concern is that, what other vehicle can we provide that protects us where we want to be legally? That maybe allows for better discussion along the way of this process? If we're closing meet and confer off to just after, that, I'm, thank you. I probably don't want to knock that head. I want to make sure you understood where that was headed.
Well, can I just say something too? And I'm glad you brought this up because I'm coming into this towards the very end and I've been really trying to take some time and wrap my head around this. I haven't been through this, so that's kind of been my struggle. And this piece is exactly the piece that I was struggling with too. That communication piece and having the discussions. And I know that's really where a lot of, a lot of angst is coming from this piece. And I would echo, I have the same mindset on this as you do, so I'm glad you brought that up.
Well, I'm on the other side, I'm sorry. I think that the one piece is probably something that maybe hasn't even happened since Adam has been on the board very much. But there is something called joint leadership meetings that used to happen regularly. And I know that we've already said that they will happen next year because, you know, doing meet and confer to accommodate the budget.
Right.
But before Dr. Sarnoff talks about that, I just want to say the other piece about the communication. Last week when I was interviewing from MHA, or not, excuse me, not MHA, our mail about the newspaper, or about, you know, all these kinds of things. And I was explaining that, you know, our reason for putting this in a policy is to try to more clearly communicate, you know, what's going on. I think that, you know, we can, we can, you know, do a search of all the emails that Aaron has sent about what our priorities are and we can, we have all the emails about what their priorities are. But my point was just when I was doing that interview, the woman said to me, oh, this is a really good idea. She was like, every time I talk to them, there's so much confusion about what's going on. So I think just trying to really be like, we might agree to disagree, but like, let's just like say here is like the process that best we understand following the law. And then let's like move on and start addressing, you know, what are our priorities? And what are, definitely, like, what? like, when Steve Austin sent that, you know, one email with, you know, the list of priorities, I was like, I'm happy to know this. Like, I, this is not what you had sent previously. I'm glad to know this so that when we're going into our next, you know, rounds of negotiation, we know what's on your mind. But anyways, you asked about other options and so.
Thank you for that. And I appreciate you guys raising the question, to the, to the question about meet and confer and why we're being advised to bifurcate the process. It's plain simple. It's so that one part of the negotiation process can be held up in order for part B to occur. And that's not only to protect the interest of the district, but also protects the staff from the district doing something similar to that. We're not going to close on a total base wage until you agree to X, Y, or Z in meet and confer. And so I think until such time as we start finding our footing and we find our groove with meet and confer, this might not be a bad idea, just simply because there has been so much miscommunication, whether mistakenly or wantonly, I might add, to this effect. The district had singles, had mentioned, had messaged to the MHA multiple times, these are the things that we'd like to talk about. Co-Curry was actually on our agenda for last year's negotiations and when it was requested that that not be the case, but that would bring it more to this year, that's what we did. We did not really receive anything more from the MHA until well after the budget had been completed. Moreover, we didn't actually receive something until very late spring. By then, trains left the station, right? But what they did do is very helpful for us is then to be able to say to ourselves as we craft next year's budget, we know that the MHA would like to talk about these things. And assuming that we mutually want to do this, well, then why not do it? Why not have a conversation around it? I think it's just order of operations.
Yep.
And we can absolutely get to a yes with them. It just means we just have to, when we call for these things, to have them ready, let's talk about them, and then let's bake them into the budget. Yeah. We want for them to be happy. They're deserving of being happy. We all know that they're very, very hardworking. They're loving, loving people. The things that they do for their kids, especially that which we don't see every day, it's not a question about deserving, it's about a question of putting it in order within our budget, meeting that, as you rightfully said to me on the phone about making certain that we're, you know, meeting that not only the, their needs, but also the community's ability to pay for these things. We can get to a yes, it might just take up some time.
So do you see beyond this, then, do you see a policy, excuse me, and had been read or something written that would play out timing on some of that stuff? Because I think that's what it kind of comes down to, right, is if, if these are topics that you want for meet and confer, we should know about them in August, not?
Yeah, April. So the timing of negotiations changes based upon, of course, when we get the, this is a great question, based on when we get done with the budget by end. But meet and confer, in my estimation, they've told us now what they'd like to talk about. So when we bake in a proposed budget to the board in January-ish, we'd like to be able to say, these are some things we think we can move forward on. These are some things that require some significant dollars and we need to, we need to plan, be more planful for it. The key timing of it is really going to be the January timeframe. So we're ahead of the schedule in terms of what we now know from the MHA, assuming, of course, that there's not going to be an onslaught of additional things that need to be considered, at which time we'll ask them to do as we have in the past, which is please prioritize your needs because we want you to get what you want, but we may not be able to accommodate everything. Does that help answer the questions? It does. It's, it's this, we've been in this weird, we got into this later than other districts did. And I feel like we've been dance partners that have been stepping on each other's toes throughout the way a little bit. And there's been a lot of, you know, confusion and I've gone back and forth because, I know that at first the big concern and lingered through this year was the definition of the base wage. And it's still a major concern, but that they again wanted to prosper that for a change in how that's done. I've pushed and I've prodded and I've tried to determine, at the end of the day, does that affect anything? And I can't see a real dollar impact on that regardless of how that is defined. And so our position of making ourselves legally protected makes a lot of sense from our end. So I, you know, that, that one is just going to have to be an agree to disagree, essentially. I just want to make sure that we have enough vehicles open and that, that we're able to talk through those points and we're on the same page. And we're not going to necessarily agree at the table. We're not going to maybe agree on all the meet and confer points. Just want to make sure that the, the process allows for that hearing of viewpoints. And so in addition to just this opportunity to meet and confer when it's possible to do that, we talked about joint leadership, which is something I brought to the district eight years ago when I came. This is an opportunity for us to meet three or four times a year, for us to talk about typically topics that don't cost things, right, working conditions and the like, because the budget part has been kind of addressed. But the board has even gone a step further and offered an opportunity to participate in personnel committee, which really also effectuates employee handbook, board policy, feedback even on administrative regulations. So on balance, when you look at the things that the district does to engage its staff, I, I, there's always room to do more, don't get me wrong, but I think we're doing okay. I think we're doing okay.
Do we think, to that point around timing and process and ongoing communication, the wording, the specific language around conclusion, if, is, is the right thing or if it were, shall do so separately from total base wage negotiations, which is what our stance has been all along, is that these are two separate things. We're not talking about meet and confer items during negotiations. But to your point gets away from that?
If you were to reverse it, where you would talk about meet and confer before you talk about total base wages, you still run the risk of having either party tie meet and confer to a successful, that's why it's purposely oriented as conclusion according to the board's attorney. By the way, WASP did look at this. This is the WASP.
I don't know if this is not relevant to include in here, but within this meet and confer, you know, just a statement that says, you know, in addition to meet and confer, there are, you know, joint leadership meetings and participation, like, just acknowledging that like, this isn't the only times, some kind of sense of that.
I'm just curious, has that been communicated to MHA at all? There's the possibility of this, the joint, the, the other meetings, I'm just curious.
Oh, yeah, we've had them.
Okay, okay.
And we've had personnel committee. I've been on that committee for every year since I've been on the board. It's looked a little different here and there, but it ran this spring.
Yep.
The only reason we didn't have joint leadership is because we've had, through back to back negotiating, you know, like, I don't think it would have actually been possible.
I do, I mean, to your, to your point, Adam, that this, there, there is, I think, ongoing opportunity as we get through these growing pains to figure out the timing and the process to get everybody moving on the same page at the right time to make that, to make those requests, to have them considered in time to, to do anything about it and to make sure that we're, we're both on the same page, not just when the time for negotiation comes up and then it goes away, but, but all throughout the year as well.
To that end, I'm assuming that we are collecting, have a sweet spreadsheet of all the things that they want to discuss, that we have been able to, or even though we have discussed and have been able to find out the rest of the form?
They provided us an email in which they indicated the items that they'd like to have considered moving forward. They haven't provided necessarily, to the best of my recollection, what they'd like to see in terms of change, just that they'd like to see a change. But we're absolutely happy to start the comparative analysis on, on those topics and have them be a part of a potential meet and confer bearing, barring any kind of issue with the, with the state budget. We'd love to talk about it.
I'm just wondering if we couldn't, that's not this, this is something separate, but just codify that so that's a communication sent out to them based on our time. And I don't know, okay, that just says, hey, these were the things over discussed, give us priorities one, two, and three.
And we've, we've.
And I know you've done something.
We've got a lot of it.
Okay, all right, cool. Thank you, Erin.
So with the, so what do you anticipate? I realize I'm getting a little away from the policy specifics, but looking forward to the next year, Matt, we don't have a budget. We don't know what the budget's going to be, that'll get settled. We know what it is for this coming year. After that, we have a legislature, we will hopefully find out a year from now what the upcoming budget is going to be, meaning, in the way we've been doing these negotiations, it's probably September-ish, October, right? Is that right?
I hate to promise something and be wrong, but I can, assuming what you're saying is accurate, I would agree with you. In January, we come to the board based upon various scenarios as we do every year. One huge factor that's not referenced at all in any of this, of course, is student enrollment. And we know student enrollment all around the, the state, the country for that matter, where student decreases in enrollment. And we know that that's a major qualifier in terms of per pupil expenditure. So we may get $400 more per student in, let's just play it out for a second, but if you have fewer students, you're not going to have. So all of these opportunities, another letter that needs to be pulled is CPI.
Yes.
So all of those pieces would lead me to hope that we could begin to conduct a 25-26 negotiation sometime in October of 2025. But I hate to say something and then pull back. So there's lots of things that are beyond this district control, beyond this board's control, that might change that. But that would be optimal.
I mean, we've had years where the state budget hasn't been signed until October or November, so, you know, it's, it's hard to say that this is when we'll do it because if they haven't even signed it yet, we still, we still, we'll have our best, I should say, Scott's best guess with this crystal ball, but.
And yeah, and I guess, I guess part of what my thought process was on that is that we can get priorities and have an idea of the budget in January, but if we're not talking about it until 10 months later, that's still a long time to go. And so what I hope is that we still have that ongoing communication to make sure that those priorities are current and updated and whatever information, like, whatever we need to flex and adapt to. I know we start January with an idea where we think things are going to go and, and some whatever scenarios based off of what happens in the legislature, but, but 10 months is a long time and a lot of variables happen along the way. And so I just want a sustainable and flexible future coming to that.
Well, and I think by not putting in dates, not putting in exactly how we're going to communicate, and not putting in some of that stuff that gives us that flexibility, because as soon as we put in here, oh, you're going to give us your priorities by January 1, like, then we've, we've pigeonholed ourselves. So then if something happens, then they're like, well, we want to change it. Like, no, we put it in a policy, it's January 1, now you can't change it. So.
I agree. I don't think it's a policy thing.
This helps us get to the point where we're not re-cashing the same stuff over and over. It solidifies our foundation and then we can kind of go up from there. And we might come back next year and go, oh, we kind of want to, we want to rework how this is because we're really doing it this way now, or, or whatever. But at least it gives us, we're all at the same, there's no question, this is where we're starting from. And so we're not going backwards.
Now, a question, do we approve this tonight, or do we see it with all the changes that we've established?
There aren't too many changes that you proposed. I'm happy to read through them rather quickly if you'd like, the first of which happens to deal with the negotiation team. There you ask that we indicate that the board selects a total base wage bargaining team that may include at least two board member representatives, typically the president, the vice president, and treasurer. And then at the end of that paragraph, something to the effect of the board will identify a chief spokesperson who is not already a member of the board would also be considered. Down in meet and confer, there would be language relative to, said meetings shall be publicly posted under Wisconsin's open meeting law with discussion topics of mutual interest, including, included on the agenda, and then indicate that there are other opportunities other than just meet and confer and negotiations inclusive of joint leadership and personnel committee. And then lastly, the other simple change was just moving this to and and or, and and or.
I'll make the motion to approve the policy.
Before we vote, though, do you mind if I, I, we don't get a, we haven't had a lot of opportunity to talk about this. And I just want to maybe say a few words about, you, you started to bring it up, Adam, about the definition of base wage, but what we haven't really talked about is the impact of the definition of base wage. And so I just wanted to state openly and publicly that, that staff compensation is varied and complex and has a lot of variables to it, of which this is a very small piece in terms of what the number is that, that our, that our teachers and staff take home. It is salary benefits, retirement benefits, supplemental pay, the pay schedules, all of those things are outside of this, this definition that doesn't actually impact our budget by the definition itself. What impacts the budget is all of those other things and the money that we have available in the budget to allocate to salaries.
And then we can stay there, so?
Exactly. Exactly. So that is, I don't, I just, I don't want people to come away thinking that this, this definition locks a person into a certain salary, a certain position, a certain limits, a certain increase. It is, that's not, that's not what it is. And so, the main thing I just wanted to say, make sure it's clear.
Appreciate you saying that. And I think my, the struggle on this, and the struggleless discussion and why I wanted to just talk through that too, is that I think we have a lot to be proud of the last two years in terms of that outcome of this. I know that it's not going to, that no outcome will ever be totally pleasing to everyone, but the amount of money that we're able to put into the salary pool last year with the help of the community was amazing. The work that we did, that the administrative team did to, to make sure that we could come up with another brilliantness amount this year is something that I'm really happy with. And I hope that we can continue to sharpen our pencils and find new ways forward and get some help from the state legislature on this because it is one, it is one piece of pie that we're trying to divide. Our hands are tied to a lot of the other inputs that we love. Cancel more widgets, as we say, to drive revenue. And to the other, to the point I hear you saying too, is that we have engaged the MHA to join us when it comes time for, after health insurance renewal. So they do see us having conversations about usage rate, fighting for the fact that we don't want to change in time design, advocating for even additional resources for health insurance. Well, then now, a couple of years in a row, now receiving an actual reduction in premium. Most boards of education take, they pay about 88% of the health insurance premium. They would take the savings, 88% of that, and keep it themselves. This board has very generously given it all back to its employees. We're grateful for that. We don't want to seem ungrateful. But those are the other kinds of things that I think your thoughtful point currently is is that communication needs to be shared about what really is happening in the total compensation model, not just around total base wages. But I like your term, judge us on the outcomes, not necessarily just the process, because the outcomes have been very positive for all of us. And we're grateful to the community. Many members in our community are not seeing these kinds of increases. Our staff deserve these increases. Our staff need these increases in order to be competitive. I think we're there. I think we're now third in our comparables when it comes to wages. And when you look at a retirement benefit for our staff, that And when you look at a retirement benefit for our staff that's coming out of the organization, many school districts don't have that benefit any longer. You see the kind of plan design, you have health insurance-wise, many school districts don't offer that, to have that kind of deductible. So yeah, maybe on dollar amount, no, we're not going to catch Verona. But Verona has a very different tax base. So where's other ways in which we can get at a really good spot for our teachers? And kudos to the board, kudos to the community for making certain that that's a possibility. I know how much our community cares, rightfully so, about our educators. I use that term just, not, not just teachers, because our teachers are amazing, in fact, they are amazing, but it's also all of the people who comprise the successful organization we have. So I really appreciate your comment about just looking at total remuneration, not just compensation. That's why I think we're seeing people leaving school districts 15, 20 years in, coming to Mountmore. We're going to a school district that is the capital of Man, of Wisconsin, that's offering 0% increase, and we have people who are applauding because they see what's happening here in our district. Our turnover rate is the second lowest in Dean County. So people are fighting to get down the doors, and the people who are wanting to come in are wanting to come in because they see the good things happening here. So I'm not trying to pat myself or to pat the board on the back. I'm just stating the facts, and the facts of the case are, we have a lot, so be proud of.
Leah, give me a motion.
Motion to approve policy 180. I'm going to make a second.
I'm not sure I understand.
AI is taking over. Back off, Siri.
I've turned it down.
I will make a second. Is there any further discussion?
I just, one last thing. I read it, and reread it, and reread it. I went cross-eyed. I want to reread again. I don't see anything in here that makes, this process, changes the process that we followed the last three years in any way. I just want to make sure that that's clear. It does nothing to restrict how we have approached meet and confer. It does nothing to restrict or change any of the ways that we've negotiated anything in the past. This is simply putting on paper exactly what has happened and what we would anticipate happening in the future. So I just want to make sure that everyone else agrees with that, that we're not restricting anything. I agree by putting this policy to place, it's simply transparent that I know what we're, what we're doing.
I agree. I don't think we're trying to restrict anything. I think we're trying to just be clear and communicate. I think we're trying to include things like board members would be a part of it, topics will be mutually agreed upon. Just trying to lay it out so that we can, I tried to say earlier, like this is just, you know, as Leah was saying, here's the, here's the process, and now we all can move forward and be efficient and effective and work on the outcomes that we've lost our teachers.
And to that point, I was thinking through that as well, that it allows the latitude to make the decisions that we've made as a board about stages of negotiations, stages of meet and confer. Those were all decisions that we made that are independent of this policy. So it leaves that latitude.
Roll call, Joel?
Yes.
Yes. Adam?
Yes.
Sarah?
I'm going to make a statement.
I'm going to guess. I am yes.
I'm curious, one obsession.
It's a first reading. So Ken, within those.
Because she didn't say.
Got it. Ken?
Two quick business items, if you don't mind, I'm going to go out and get Tom. But I wanted to thank you for being here today. It's a school night. We have a board policy says that we're supposed to let you go home at 9 o'clock. Look, we can shut things down.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much for, you can just leave it wherever it is. I'm really sorry. I just want to do it. One of us will figure it out.
You go home, what about?
You guys don't want me to, I'm supposed to stay at home?
No, you keep it all up.
Okay.
We'll turn off. You guys can keep it recording, we'll turn off.
Yeah, I got you.
We'll keep it. Who's missing a little bit more?
All right, 7C, first reading, consider revisions to board policy 453.5, suitable physical examinations. Brian, ready, you love it from here.
This policy has a, there's a lot of red lines if you, if you reviewed it. Most of it is kind of reorganized, put under headings, kind of reorganized. The piece that was the biggest change that was taken out is, we really looked at the state law of what it requires. And it's, it's not, if you read the policy, it's, it's the only policy that we probably just have recommendations for, right? Like it's, it's really not very clear in terms of, when we get to immunizations, it's very clear. And so that is really just taking out what the specific law is, their reference down below, and then rewording how you can get the leaker. So that's just more of a grammar piece. But then when you get down to the next part, for eye examinations, kind of one labeling it, but what the law states is that we should collect the eye exam of students before December 31st of their kindergarten year. But nobody has to do it. And if we don't get it, there's nothing that happens. It's just like a, please do this. And so the policy is, is saying that, like, we would like you to do it, and we're going to ask you for evidence of it. Well, right? So that's kind of the last piece to it. We did take out, and I think it's, it was just a little bit above two. In the original policy, it also required dental, but there's nothing in the law that requires dental. So that was removed. Then in the bottom, we did the physicals, we just changed suitable to valid. And then we kept the, they're strongly recommended for all children. The only other piece too, there could be a requirement for a medical appointment for somebody to come back to school, but that would be a building principal decision, and then either in consultation with the health department and/or a district medical advisor. So that's really like thinking of something big, right? Like so, like measles, or we're predicting something, you know, more, more big scale or significant or a contagious disease that we might need for recovery. That's the policy.
Questions or comments, Brian?
I loved it. Great, thanks. That sounds like a motion.
Second motion by Joel, second by Leah to approve board policy 453.5. Any further discussion? Is that first reading, so a roll call? Joel?
Yes.
Leah?
Yes.
Adam?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Carly?
Yes.
Yes.
And also a yes. Brian, you're up again. Second reading, consider revisions to board policy 353.1.
So this was, we did the first reading last time, we didn't have enough people. So if there's any further questions that I can hand for an answer. So there wasn't any comments the last time.
Motion to approve 351.3.
Second.
Motion by Leah, second by Adam, to approve board policy 353.1. Further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Thank you, Brian.
Thank you.
Scott, rule of board policy 671.
It's a second reading.
I would like to keep this one. I would like to keep this one.
Oh, okay. So yeah, we discussed it at the last board meeting. Just a quick reminder, the finance committee reviewed this quite a while ago now. After review of WSB and finance, it made sense that we deleted. Not because it's not important, it's because it doesn't provide any substance to what we already are doing with our employee handbook and what state law requires.
Motion to remove policy 671. Second. Motion by Leah, second by Sarah, to remove board policy 671. Further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All righty, next one, board policy 671.2, Scott.
Same thing on this one. You'll see finance committee reviewed it a while ago, approved it, and then through work with WSB, it made sense to just make the revision because it presented, as we discussed last week.
Were you able to determine this doesn't affect like PTO reimbursements as far as tax goes? Because we reimburse that.
It's fine. I actually talked to our auditors about it.
Okay.
Yeah.
Then I'll make a motion to approve, I've forgotten the number.
Second.
Motion by Leah, second by Adam, to approve policy 671.2. Any further discussion or questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Thanks, Eric.
Bernie, citizen comments?
There are none.
Future agenda items, if there's anything that he would like to talk about, please let me know or I know. It's rolling way down, number 10, schedule of next meetings, anything you would like to highlight?
Yes, please, if you don't mind, just rather quickly, about two weeks from tonight, we will be meeting at 6:00 p.m. There will not be a safety and wellness committee meeting. At 6:00 p.m., we hope to take care of regular business before the board, and then shortly thereafter at 7:00 p.m., have the opportunity to get into a workshop with Dr. Fran Finko to talk about those second part of the goals that we discussed. And then I wanted to know if there's a feel about the July 1st Board of Education meeting? That meeting is on a Monday, and didn't know if everyone was going to be here. But we have a court that night. Do you still intend to visit, perhaps maybe since there won't be an education meeting? With board members, if we really have a meeting, move to 6:00 p.m. rather than 7:00 p.m.? A consideration.
Does anyone have any examples?
I'll leave it here.
Whatever, like, if anyone can.
Sounds good.
Hustle, we can light fireworks on that.
I was going to say, anybody check the schedule, there's not going to be fireworks in the door. You don't think I'm about this. Last time, as though we had a meeting and there were the fireworks.
That's right.
We met early so we could leave.
Yeah, that's true. Well, great, let's make 6:00 p.m. on the 1st of July.
Did I see emails to next meeting at 5:30 for pictures that we were discussing?
Yes, great question. Thank you to Sarah. We have a number of board members and administrative team members who we'd like to have a professional headshot of you. One of our former students who graduated last year has her own photography studio, and we thought maybe just having that photographer here at the middle school, say 5:30. That'd be terrific.
So Kate, wish you to wear kiss makeup?
Well, if you would like to have your picture mentioned, if you would like to get your picture read out.
My lash was so good.
I want your autograph. Selling on eBay.
Today is a filter.
So I had a conversation with Jessica Volko. Picture taking, so I have mixed feelings about it at a certain level. So I think it's great that it's a former student that's just starting to get her life. So, but in general, I would say that a professional photographer for, for us to get a picture for the district website is not necessary and maybe not the best use of school funds. So I just put that on right here, I guess. Well, certainly if you don't wish to participate, we respect that, and. It's one less picture. Yeah, like I said, being that it's a former student that maybe is just starting out, give some leniency on that. But just in general, I can appreciate it. Yeah, that's very fair. Thank you for being so polite.
Motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Leah, second by Sarah, all those in favor of adjourned, please say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? If you have not signed them, there are two cards to be.